My uncle is teaching.
Welcome to the May third, twenty twenty-two City Council meeting. I hope you all are having a great day and praying for some sunshine.
Amen.
Yeah, I'm hoping for it. Would you please join me in the pledge of yours? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebobbed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call?
Smack, here. Nichols, here. Beam? Siebel? Eric Osborne?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion for the approval of the May third, twenty twenty-two agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve May third, twenty twenty-two agenda as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, number five tonight is Resolution sixty-six hundred, authorizing the appointment of acting city clerk.
Would you just, could you just explain when I asked you that, that it is temporary, that it's two hours a day, or days a week, so everybody knows that?
Yes, for some of the business that is going forward, and especially the state vacancy specifically, um, and also segregation of duties, um, I've talked to the state auditor regarding this, um, and she's okay with it, um, because we're gonna re-advertise and to get more applicants in for the city clerk, other than the ones we've already advertised for and interviewed.
We had a question here come up, I was asked. Can we get the, uh, can your plate is ready, pull, can we get our emails attached to the, uh, places that you put the advertising out, so that as a council, we can kind of look at them, take a little bit off your plate, and if we come to a consensus, a personnel committee or whatever, then they can come to you and say, here's two or three we like, what do you think? Is that feasible to do that?
I actually should check into it. Yeah, we do.
I mean, that would be a good idea. I think that like, I know that there's two, two of us around personal committee that, you know, will be able to review those applicants, but I think, like, Ron probably does a lot of this, he has so many people, and if we get, like, all the resumes in, we can all look at them, maybe have a, um, meeting after the council meeting, like a closed-door meeting, to discuss the resumes and then kick, you know, like, the top, whatever contenders, and then we'll have to, like, see what you want, see what we all think out, and then interview them, I'd say, for things too.
That's really why we said we always appoint two council members for the personnel committee. That is primarily about the two people doing this, it's personal, because you can't meet with more than two people at a time without pulling other things.
But can you do a closed-door session to talk about resumes?
No.
Um, that's more, that's more like an HR thing, isn't it?
That would be, um, it's, there is a closed session for personnel purposes, but it usually determine the, you know, hiring, actions, et cetera, yeah. But not one for hiring.
I just, I wanna point out as well, because this is something that, I mean, we haven't advertised, we haven't put out things, because we've been trying things behind the scenes. Imagine if I've been the secondary check signer to try some of the checks and balances, as we were made aware of additional things that I potentially would need to be doing in the general ledger, uh, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and everything, just to update the council. That's where I had to reach out also, because my employer now is also our new auditor. So I have an independence issue, so I was not able to take that next step. So that's where the additional piece of okay. Again, it was one of those, as we were trying to figure out the best way to do it to remain compliant, this came up. Well, let's appoint an acting city clerk to fill in that additional gap, which is what I was gonna have to do, but couldn't. So now we have a third set of eyes as well, because I will still remain around helping too, just not in the capacity that we needed until we can find a full-time person. So that was also this, as well as trying to, to interview and find, you know, the city clerk, Kristi, you and I, of course, maybe, you know, doing the interviews and things. Just stating as well, the public call, do you know anybody that's looking for a job in the city administration or business finance? We're, we're hiring. Um, we had, uh, just, again, I absolutely understand the frustration, I absolutely understand the uh, loss of patience, because, believe me, I'm coming up here signing checks and doing things and all extra that are additional duties that I'm happy to do, but I'm certainly even happier when we can find somebody to do it for me and, and fill in that role. Um, for the public as well, we had, uh, we had an excellent candidate this last week that we, we interviewed. Seventy thousand plus benefits, non-negotiable. So again, just not even close to where we would need him for salaries and stuff for a city clerk. We are absolutely trying. Say the council brought up that, well, let's put it out in Dean, let's go to Iowa Workforce, let's start advertising more places. Happily, that's, I believe, on the agenda for tonight, so I, I do wanna let everybody know that we are trying, and we are absolutely not trying to sit on it, and believe me, the ex work, my wife will certainly appreciate having me back home a little bit more once this is all done, but she definitely understands it is part of the role that, uh, that I signed up for, so.
Um, going back to the resolution, you, um, on the resolution, it was mentioned that, like, you, or the code was cited in three, you know, three seventy-two dot thirteen and then section four.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see that that actually matches the actual code. So I guess I want, I guess on resolutions, are we supposed to, like, have it word for word, or can we tweak it a little bit to make it more?
Generally speaking, we wouldn't put that in there at all. But I wanted to say, even appoint an employee or even a counselor at this point, due to the special election, um, slash, you know, advertising we have to do to fill the vacancy, that is only, the only purpose why I put that code section on there.
So we can kind of vary from it, though, the code? Because I, what I'm worried about is somebody looking back on this saying, okay, this isn't what the code says.
We can do it as amended. I, I have, um, except as otherwise provided by state law or city law, the council may appoint city officers and employees and prescribe their powers, duties, compensation, and terms, um, the appointment of a city manager. This is all the code for, you know, as acting in the vacancy of a city clerk. And in this section, it is for.
Yeah, well, no, just that last sentence, the appointment of city manager, um, must be made on the basis of the individual's qualifications and not the basis of the political affiliation. But then this in our resolution, it just kind of says, um, duty, or, you know, goes, if the office of the city clerk is vacant. So it's not really saying that we can do that if it's vacant in the code. So I wanna make sure that this resolution's okay for us to use it too. I don't know how that, like, I don't wanna get.
In section two, it says if the off, I have the code right here.
Yeah, I have the two.
Okay. In section two, do you not see that?
Where are you looking, what, what are you looking at?
Number two.
Yep. If, so, so you combined two and four together, basically.
Well, they were separate paragraphs.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, so, as long as it's okay, that's all I'm.
So what is your question, Kristi?
I just wanna make sure that section thirty, you know, you cited three seventy-two point thirteen, number four.
Yeah.
And the, it's not exactly word for word for what section four on the city code is, so I want it, or on the code, so I just wanna make sure that we're not doing anything wrong.
No.
You just referred.
I just, I just referred to that subsection.
It's not fully typed out the full paragraph, it's just a sublin of it?
Yes.
Is that what you referred to?
No, so the last sentence on the code, number four, is saying that the appointment of the city manager clerk for that matter, I guess, must be made on the basis of the individual's qualifications and not on the basis of political affiliation. And in this resolution, the last bit of it says, if the office of the city clerk is vacant. So what I'm trying to do is just make sure that we're not very, you know, going away from that number four and making sure that you can put number two and number four on there, that's fine, if that's the case, but I wanna make sure that that's what we can do.
Yeah, and the point, I wasn't trying to talk about the city manager in that, in that part of that sentence at all. It was just to point out the council may appoint officers and employees.
Yep, and I understand.
But the event of a vacancy which refers back to section two.
Well, I understand, I understand what you're trying to do. What I'm asking is, can we do it on this resolution? That's what I'm asking, because I don't want to be, get caught on the technicality of section two and four being combined or whatnot.
I was just referring to that actual sentence in the code.
Okay.
Yep. And that generally speaking isn't on there, but that is why I put it on there, because of the circumstance at hand.
So these.
With the vacancy.
So these resolutions cannot be added to, like, if we wanted to say that this is, you know, for a timeframe of ninety days, because I feel like we should be held accountable to get interviews done and try to get someone hired if possible within ninety days and then revisit it if we don't?
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward, folks, you know, after tonight, with the action on the agenda, we're moving a head full forward. She's only working two hours a day.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, I'm not saying anything about the librarian working, I'm just saying, what we need to do is set some guidelines for us to try to meet those guidelines. So in ninety days, if we don't have somebody hired, then let's revisit it and see what we can do, or if we need to change something.
Sure.
So I, what I was wondering is, is we, we can add that to the resolution?
I don't feel it's necessary, Kristi.
I can see it maybe being as a separate item, I don't think it would go on the resolution. But I can see that something that we can set for ourselves, for sure. Just holding ourselves accountable.
It's, it's only gonna be acting city clerk as long as we need her. That is the other thing.
Yeah, but we don't want it to be just hanging out there. We want it to be able to say, okay, ninety days or ninety, or forty-five days, let's make it.
I mean, we can amend to add that language. We can amend the resolution to add the language.
So we're not doing the job.
Ron, are you okay with that? Amending the resolution to add ninety days?
If we're not doing the job, right, you can get rid of them at any time you wanna, council can.
Yeah, right.
So, so if it isn't working out, we're going.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I think she's talking in terms of the process of accountability, uh, to work forward to get, to get somebody, not when they're here working, but that's part of the situation too. I think she leaning towards having something in the resolution that we have this window to find somebody, and then we need to be actively.
You know, unfortunately, if we put that language in there, and if it's on, you know, the ninety-first day, then she's not gonna be here, is that what that means?
No, no, it just means we can revisit it and bring it back up and do another.
We can revisit it if, you know, if it's sixty days, we'll revisit it. I say sixty days, we'll revisit it. This is just appointing her as acting city clerk to get us through the legalities of what we need to get through for, one is segregation of duties, um, from the state email that I sent you, from the state auditor. You know, she wants some accountability too.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to put some guidelines in place so that we can follow on and say, okay, hey, we're, we're coming up to that fifty-five day mark, let's throw back on the agenda and make sure that we're doing what we need to, or do we need to do something different, or how can we look at this? You know, and that's just what I'm saying, is it would be nice to see that on this resolution, so that we can say, okay, hey, this is for sixty days, and then after that, we can revisit it and see if we need to keep her for another sixty days, or keep her, or what are we doing, what do we need to do?
It's a council appointment, you can get rid of them anytime you want. If you don't be able to do the job, the rest of the council will be around.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution sixty-six hundred.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
I'll.
Kind of did you act around it.
Roll call, please.
I was waiting for you.
I know that, I respect that.
Smack, yes. Nichols?
Yes.
Beam? Excuse me, absent. Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Any, would you like to come up and join us?
Did you pull up my notes?
Yeah, you're gonna lose your lock job tonight, buddy.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Did you fill your notes? I've just been drawing pictures several times.
And we also appreciate your willingness to, to fill in for a little bit. Number six, approval of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes.
So moved. I got a deal on the amlets. It says the amlets ask the city to take over, over, ask the city to take over the purchase and placements of flags going forward. That isn't the way I understood it. I understood that they were gonna do it.
Oh, no.
No, I.
No, no, we are taking it over.
Oh, that isn't the way I understood it, but it's, or I misunderstood it then.
Yeah, because one of their whole purposes of coming that night is because they've aged out. They don't have the staff, they don't have the support, they don't, people aren't joining of the younger.
I thought they wanted the money to buy the new flags, but they were gonna put them up.
No, we're gonna take that over.
That's understood something in some ways.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but that was one of the main, you know, and also in transparency, we couldn't, you know, we, if we bought the flags, we had to keep them. I, you know, put the question out to the state auditor on that. Because, you know, if it's a nonprofit organization, we can't donate to them.
No.
So, you know, it was, it was kind of like, we needed to take it over.
The flags were the, were the property of the city, but I didn't know, we weren't paying them any money in particular, we were just paying for the product.
Right.
We weren't paying any wages, I thought that was the understanding, we bought the flags and they were continuing to put them up.
Yeah, no, they, they don't have the, they don't have the hands anymore, unfortunately.
I, I'm with you, Ron. I, part of that, I understood of, they asked for help when it come to hanging some of the higher ones and stuff, just to get up and down, but the ones that were more ground level or anything, they were gonna try to continue to do for as long as they could.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
But the ones that needed an elevated, whether it's a small bucket truck or ladders, they asked for help for those. I do remember that.
And there's only three that are at ground level, and that's in front of the amlets, and I'm sure that they'll try to continue to do that. We're just gonna do all the ones on Lafayette and the other few areas they have them up. I'll take a second, please.
Did you have any, any else, Ron?
No, that's all we have, I don't know.
Then I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Do I say that?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number seven, approval of the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, approval of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number nine is Resolution sixty-six oh three, uh, appointing part-time building inspector. Um, I, some of you know Steve Satomaro, um, he has been a fill-in for us when our previous building inspector was, took vacation or what have you. Um, he's been working very well with us, is willing to continue working with us. Obviously, as you saw, it's sixty-five percent, pretty much the goal rate, uh, that's what the city arrangement pays, and some other cities are actually looking for, um, building inspectors right now, but there seems to be a shortage. Um, anyway, some cities even give a hundred percent, so we're doing sixty-five percent, twenty-five dollars an hour, um, for code type enforcement, or, you know, reevaluation of code, or, you know, some of the other stuff that we have been asking already, so.
You gonna do the plumbing and heating too, or?
Yes. Everything been electrical.
Yeah, I know electrical, don't, but I say no, because he has the expertise for plumbing and heating.
Yes, he does.
He does?
That's what he's been doing. He, he's certified.
He's a building contractor, but so am I, but I know you're plumbing and, I know how to do it, but I'm, everybody wanna inspect it. And if, soon, somebody, you have a plumber who ends up having the heating person doing the heating inspection, if one person isn't knowledgeable on all of these different aspects.
Yeah, I mean, he feels quite comfortable, he's been doing building inspection for his city, I mean.
But I'm just questioning whether he has that type of knowledge. I mean, anybody can look at a person, it looks good, so it's okay.
Well, I.
He comes up.
He really is into the code, I'm telling you.
Yes, I know he's.
That guy knows code, frontwards, forward, backwards, sideways.
Is he not here?
He couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
Um, he will be attending the May seventeenth meetings, so everyone can have a chance to meet him that doesn't know him.
I know he's.
Not, I know some plumbers and heating people that quite the others, but if he's qualified, then there is one person doing all.
I know, I, I happened to be here when he came in talking with the mayor one evening, and I know he's familiar with international building code, in fact enough that he said, we, we need to get you up twenty fifteen. I wholeheartedly agree. Same thing with different, you have this in place, do you have this in place? Nope, 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 okay, we need to get that, and so, very forward already, just from the ten-minute conversation I got to have with him, that I know the things he was citing and bringing up, like the mayor had said, I didn't ask specific on plumbing or heating, but it was bringing up very true things of what he's already been looking for, a property he'd been to just earlier in the day, and had to cite some things and whatnot, so I, I know as far as international building code and stuff, he was very familiar.
Unless you are, how would you know?
Unless I am?
No.
Because of my interactions with him for past things.
No, I'm not questioning him, but I, that's why I questioned your building code, you've been infiltrating around, but.
Yeah, just through, more through the fire service, so we've utilized his, his expertise and things and what we've done before, and just the limited exposure I've had to the international building code and things.
No, I didn't know you had any, so that's why I.
Little bit. Definitely not an expert. I definitely don't want that on my shoulders, but.
None of us are.
Mayor, I had a question on that.
Yeah.
Are we going to advertise for a building inspector?
We can advertise for a building inspector.
I mean, are we going to again to see what we get?
I wasn't planning on that.
I think this way is a better system than what we had before, it's gonna cost us far less money than what having one on the payroll that didn't own nothing anyway either. Just so we have a setup, there's a bill that gets you all, and while they worked on commission, then it's on the payroll.
Mayor, how many hours roughly is he working per week now?
Um, I can't, you know, I mean, I'll progressively get busy, you know, the, my biggest concern about all of this code enforcement for the summer, because it is non-stop. You can ask the guys how many yards that we mow, um. You know, some of it, I, I'm assuming, you know, that neighbors call in, so that's our first rent alert, you know, but I'm just hoping it doesn't get out of control as far as code enforcement, but, um.
Put them on commission.
Money is for permanent.
Well, I mean, there's nothing saying that, you know, if we send out the administration fee, you know, we, we charge them to send it out, twenty-five dollars, we can pay him sixty-five percent of that. You know, if you think about it.
Well, even twenty-five dollars an hour, he shouldn't be able to.
Cover a lot of problems. I, I just, I, I feel that he's upfront, I feel he's honest, I feel that he's, you know, he's taught me some things already that I didn't know, so.
He's a nice guy, I've done this since working for years.
Yeah, he said he.
I was in competition with him for years, so.
Yeah, he said he had worked with you in the past.
We got along good too.
Yeah. Super nice guy, very knowledgeable.
I, I think it's a great start to fill in the gap that is needed, whether it turns on part-time, whether we determine we'd like to go in a different direction, whether it's a full-time thing. I think at least now we have it to where we can keep some things moving, and then we'll also be able to get his feedback too. And we'll see, if things aren't getting done timely, we'll be able to ask why.
See, it never was a full-time position. And until, uh, with, on a half, whole bunch of ads, he was on the police department, he was building inspector, he was dog catcher, he was code enforcement. He was all of these things. Then we put a person on that's code enforcement and building inspector. And, uh, and you got the insurance, everything else, which skyrocketed the cost. And I don't think we took in enough money, you know, all of the, the permits to even pay his salary with his benefits. For, if you got it on commission or a certain amount, and you know what your costs are gonna be, and it's not, you're gonna be able to come out in the end making money, not losing money.
I'll take a motion to approve Resolution sixty-six oh three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Smack, excuse me, Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number ten, request from Public Works Director to do, accept the vote bid of forty-five, six fifty for the crack ceiling project with Wiker Contracting, as budgeted for FY twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight, we are placing, uh, unfiled resignation of Charles Bain, Ward one, Council seat. Um, Charles had sent out his resignation on last Saturday, um, with his last day being on, um, Friday, May sixth. I just wanna thank him for his service and his time he served the city. Um, I thought he might be here tonight, but, um, we're just placing on files, this more, just a, um, type of, um, we don't even need to make a motion on it, we're just need to place it on file, so. If you'd like though, let's just do it. Can I take a motion to place it on file?
I'd make that motion, put his resignation on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twelve, council determined whether to fill the vacancy of council vacated council seat by appointment or special election.
Mayor, I'd like to see a little time on this to see what we can, if we have any interest in the community. I know the election costs money. We may have to go to that.
I think the code says if you appoint somebody, they have, people have so wrong, unless you petition the council for an election.
They do. We don't have anyone to appoint tonight because that has to be published first.
No.
Yes. This is just, you know, if you wanna appoint someone, we can move in that direction. It doesn't, the, the citizens still have time.
Otherwise, it's gonna cost the city a couple thousands in the next year.
Seventy-five hundred, yeah. Yeah. And, you know, we'd be so bad seventy-five hundred if we were in the first year of the term, that there's only a year and six months left of the term.
That's why I think we can get by, appoint somebody, appoint somebody.
Yep. Yeah, well.
And the public has so many days in which to.
That is correct. Yep, that is correct.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
So I would motion that we move to fill the vacancy by appointment to be reviewed at the next council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number thirteen, request a published notice required to fill council seat, Ward one position.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, request from mayor to advertise city clerk position with Indeed in Iowa Workforce Development. I don't know if there was any other ones that you guys wanted to advertise with, um, but it's upwards of, I think for two weeks, it was, uh, almost, what was it, four hundred and ninety or four hundred?
Change, yeah.
Yeah, to advertise on Indeed.
How come we lost the other ones we had? Were they official?
No.
City clerk, I think you were training them before, and what happened to them?
Oh. She resigned back in January.
She what?
She resigned back in January.
I know she resigned, but what, what's her reason? She went to something else?
She, it was too many hours for her.
Yeah, I didn't know, or I don't know anything about.
She was, um, it was just too many hours for her, so. She has four kids at home and.
Many hours loses job.
Well, salary, you can work upwards of.
Many as it takes.
As many as it takes to get the job, and let's just put it that way.
You can't get a job. I got a daughter who's totally qualified to go back to my old firm, but I don't think she'd accept seventy thousand dollars.
And just going forward, if you would like to address the council, if you wouldn't mind going up to the podium and stating your name, please? I'd appreciate it. Do you need a motion on that?
Not yet. Was there, Kristi, I know we kind of went back, you had. Not yet. Was there, Christie, I know we kind of went back, you had recommended Indeed as well. Is there any others? I know Indeed's the big one. There are other ones out there, but I think, you know, for money-wise, we probably best to stick to Indeed personally.
What about Iowa Workforce? Do they?
Yes.
That is wrong.
But I don't, I don't think there's a cost. We were trying to find if there's a cost or not. I think there is.
It's just getting them to get back with you. I might have to suppose they go there and.
Those are the two places I got to see, so.
You check the water, do maybe they've got some spares.
Now they keep taking ours.
Yeah.
Got no guarantee. I hired her before you.
Oh, when, yeah.
City clerk.
Right, when that guy was in office, so, yeah. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number fifteen, request from Chief Dean to dispose of old equipment utilized in the twenty-eleven draft director.
I'll make that motion to approve that request to get rid of the miscellaneous stuff with the old charger.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance six eighty-two, increase the speed on Evans Road from Lafayette Road to Gilbert, West Gilbert Drive, to thirty miles an hour, and this is the second reading. Ron had mentioned at the last meeting that it needed a super majority to waive the second and third reading that we made on this ordinance on March fifteenth, or April fifteenth. Which one was it? March fifteenth. I, upon further study, because I had gotten an opinion from the Iowa League of Cities, and it wasn't correct. So I reached out to our city attorney, and he said it did need to be a super majority. So this is only in its second reading. I'll take a motion.
I've had some people call me in reference to the speeding on Evans Road. I see we got that new sign up down there, which is great, but if we would monitor Evans a little bit, because I know this weekend, and I know it's an isolated incident, the police can't be everywhere, but a lot of people are gotta be going fifty, sixty mile an hour on Evans Road on the weekends. I know they are. When they, motorcycles probably went faster than that. I just hope that we would, what does that machine do? Does it register to anybody to?
Um, actually, not yet. We, Chief Dean and myself will be attending a webinar to teach us how to run that. It goes into the cloud. It doesn't, you know, it has some limitations, but it's gonna tell us, you know, times of day people are speeding. It's gonna tell us what the average speed is, but it has a lot of phenomenal qualities. Yes.
She's actually, or a light of flashes on the middle scrolling down, because the thing's not taking her picture.
Oh, and actually, I don't know if you experienced it, but you can, if it's, if you're going more than like thirty-five, I think it does give you that flash like that.
So you take your picture.
I can't tell you that, Kenny.
I was just gonna say, maybe we should say.
Well, no more about that. We can update you when we go through the webinar.
Yeah, I go sixty to see what it does tonight.
I, I know just this evening, because I commented to the mayor that he was glad that we got the sign in and timely, of course, for this, tonight, that I was happy to see the sign up. I know it was my initial recommendation that it's new, the thirty mile an hour speed is new, so people are gonna push it, absolutely extra attention, and I know Chief Dean is aware of that, and the officers that I've talked to as well. This sign, this scene, this sign will be able to help record statistics to help better time, so, like I said, the officers can't be everywhere at once, well, why not let that sign tell us when the officers need to be there a little more? And just simply that sign has already had an effect. So anytime if you're driving the other way, headed south, for the people that see the sign headed north, watch the brake lights light up. So it has started to have an effect. Those that wanna speed are always gonna speed. So that, that's where law enforcement and just having the tickets around to catch them is the only thing that might get them to learn. But the other ones that might just need that subtle reminder to say, hey, just watch your speed, I think it's already doing its job, and that's exactly what we wanted it for.
I'm kinda missing sitting down in front of Steve's house.
That's the next location.
Don't give me any ideas, okay?
Right by the twenty-five mile an hour zone.
There you go.
By the way, we just purchased one because it was agreed by council that we would wait to find out if we'd get a grant. We did get the grant for the second one. However, we can't purchase it until October, because that's, the fiscal year begins for GTSB in October. We are getting three thousand towards the next one, and also our insurance company does a safety grant every year, so that's gonna be another thousand off that. So total cost, I think it was around ninety-seven, seventy. Don't quote me on that, a hundred percent. So then we'll have four thousand dollars going towards that. Or maybe it was seventy-nine, ninety, I don't remember. I forget, but.
And just as a reminder, and especially since we've got some newer faces in this, those signs are made, even though they're in a post in the ground, they're made that they can be moved around. So it is not a permanent fixture. We'll be able to utilize those all throughout the city. So I know there's several places that people have told me about, Sixth Street, Michigan, McCoy, Third and Third, Third and Second, excuse me, Grand, the school, Central, I mean, just a lot of them. We'll be able to utilize that all over, East End, yep. So, so just throwing that out, that it absolutely, especially with the second sign too, we'll be looking to keep those out as long as they'll stay standard.
Can we get any more of them? Any grant made for more than two?
Well, we haven't checked further into it, but we'll surely, you know, as things come up, as grants come up, we'll surely look into it. That'd be nice to have about half a dozen of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if it becomes successful, it'd be a good thing to have.
Or we could put the money towards our, our speed card. It doesn't have the same functionality, but it does.
Is that working like the speed card?
It doesn't.
Yeah, it's got, it's got some loops. It definitely needs batteries.
Are we gonna fix it and have it operational?
Yeah, I fully intend to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm taking motion and passed, ordinance six eighty-two in a second reading.
So moved.
And that's a roll call? You gonna say it? Don't say it, Amy. What's? You've been saying roll call a lot of the time. I just, I just said that. Oh, you did, sorry. My mistake. I'm gonna start. Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number seventeen, covered discussion non-agenda items. Everybody's looking at me.
Come to the podium.
I actually have nothing. We're holding the pause for Laura Metz.
There's nobody else. I'll speak briefly. Just wanted to give an update on our attempt to hire a new officer. We advertised on Indeed, and I think Facebook and some other places, the city website. We have eleven applicants. The total of three show up and all failed.
I just wanted to put this out there. Everyone has experienced this. It's not just the city of Evansdale. There are, you can go to any business, and I'll tell you, they're gonna have a help one at the side on their door, or their window.
I've given, I've given several.
That surprises me, Ron.
I just hired somebody.
I've given several listings for different agencies across the state to the mayor, that agencies that are looking to hire, and they're offering some pretty impressive incentives to attract officers. The goal, at least in my view, the goal would be to attract somebody that's already certified, so we don't have to have that expense. Or at least somebody who's been through Hawkeye Academy or something like that, because with that sort, with that degree, we can save so many by sending them to the shorter academy. As of such, right now, I don't even think we had any certified that definitely didn't show up to our testing, so. You know, not being, I really feel that we need to sweeten the offer, so to speak. That's kind of been the trend across the state. With departments really struggling to keep and retain their staff, so that's where we're at. We're definitely going to advertise again and take another shot at it, and I expect similar results.
Well, I would ask you to bring your thoughts to us of what you're thinking about when you're saying sweeten the deal and make your criteria. I'd like to know what your.
Well, I can tell you, a lot of departments are offering higher wages, sign-on bonuses, those types of things.
What would your current officer think if a sign-on bonus or higher wage to start came in for somebody certified?
That's gonna definitely spark a conversation about what everybody else is making, I imagine.
I appreciate your time. I hope I get somebody.
Chief Dean, sorry. Sure. Relationship and stuff, especially like with Hawkeye Community College and their law program and stuff here, do you, are we active with them to kind of try to entice them fresh out of school, or is there any open?
Yeah, there, I mean, we get, I get emails from the directors over there quite often. I speak with them, so yeah, there's, there's definitely that line of communication that happens. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, council reports. I don't know anything, but about council at this time.
Can I just make a quick comment? When I voted no, I voted no for the resolution. I think Amy, I mean, I am thankful that you thought outside of Laxton, got her in here to help, because I love Amy. I think she's great in the library. I love having her there. So it's nothing against Amy. It was the resolution. I wanted it amended, just to say it gave me a guideline to go by. That was all I did. I think it was a good idea that, you know, she comes in for a couple hours, and, because I think it's a good idea to cross, like, to have people from other departments help when we need it. I think that's a great idea, because I'd like to see that the city department's working together like that.
Thank you, Christie. I appreciate that.
Are we gonna, does everybody know about three o'clock Thursday?
I gave everybody, we have a public hearing at three o'clock on Thursday, May fifth, regarding the budget protest. So it's on our website. It's posted on our website, and ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of everything that goes on at City Hall is posted on our public website, including all the budget information. Just kind of throw that out there. We also post at City Hall for the people that don't have a website, and of course, you know, for the times we need to post in the carrier, we do as well. It's just really expensive. So if nothing, no one else has anything, we'll take a motion for adjournment. Service team, too.
Make that motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same word. You know, you just looked straight at it.
You know what you've been.